To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Brock, I'm sorry, Councilman, here. Councilman Mosack.
Here.
Councilman Drake.
Here.
Councilman Beanheart.
Here.
And Councilman McGee.
Here. Approval minutes for June 11th, 2025.
So move second. I don't have them.
Did you, they emailed or did they email?
I thought they saw me.
I thought I did, yes. I don't know, I mean, I don't know, they're right there.
It was. I don't think I saw them in an email.
Yeah, it's too hard to see.
Because you asked me to email them this morning.
Yeah, but I don't.
If I didn't, then I didn't.
I mean, we're meeting on the 17th, right?
Yeah, six o'clock, 17th.
We can do it then.
Reports, Patricia, next. Council members. I do, sorry. Yay! Is all, is most of your stuff on the agenda or no?
No, no.
It's not up there. Okay, do we still contact with new focus for updates to the employment manual?
Yes.
We do, okay, so I just need to get their content. And then for the department heads, I know not everyone is here, I will be sending out what is in the file as your current job description, just asking you all to make sure it's updated, probably by the end of August, so we can make sure those are updated. The town yard sale is, we're making the rounds on Facebook between Porter and Chesterton, we've got 21 homes on it. The map is linked to the event in Facebook, and if you click on the address, it'll even tell you what they're selling. So you can like plan your day. I am gonna be meeting with Mark Swanson at Brainstorm tomorrow to build some shared drives for all of our departments, so we can start dropping documents there and keep track of those, some more information coming on that. Do I make the rug with you?
Is it still in there?
Afternoon.
What am I looking for?
The rug, the rug. Michelle had found a rug and priced it with the town seal for the floor, so I was just gonna pass her, I think we should do it. I believe from what I know is that the money was already appropriated, and I wanna say it's like eight hundred, so when that comes in.
I think we appropriated ten thousand, if I recall, to finish like
The room, right?
Do redoing the room, and we made a subcommittee and
Yeah, but she got a Thank you. So this is the style of the rug, and this would, the town seal would go on, so it'd be a circular rug for them all. It's Seventy-two by seven and two, seventy-two inches by seven and two. So I would make a motion to purchase the town logo rug from Logo Mac Central for eight hundred eighty-four dollars and forty-five cents.
What was the name of the company again?
Logo Mac Central. And I don't have the fund, but I'm guessing that it was in one of the Roll call please.
Sorry, I took notes.
You're good.
Councilman Brock.
Yes.
Councilman Mosack.
Yes.
Councilman Drake.
Yes.
Councilman Beanheart.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty.
Yes.
And then Michelle and Maddie and Jill were kind enough to teach me this system over here, so hopefully Jeremy can be over here with us and we'll work on that. But in the process of talking about what we've purchased and what we've set up, there's a second laptop that isn't something that we're necessarily using, and I think that there was a conversation about maybe sending it back. However, Jill's laptop is used as for the BZA of plan position is old, so old that Brainstorm can't help her fix things, so I just wanted to see if it would be okay if she used it.
The only purpose of that second laptop was if somebody came in, like the gentleman who came in with the building, you could put that up on the
But you can do that with what we already have.
Do that.
Yeah, 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 you can, they can either send a file and we can have it open on the computer, or there is additional USB where we could do that, so. So that's okay, I think it's just been sitting there for a while and she definitely needs one, so
Do we need to make a motion?
I mean, I'll make a motion that we let Jill use the computer, and if we were to need it for a meeting, she can just make sure it's here. Roll call. Whatever you're writing.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, abstentions?
That's all we want for this? Well, that's pretty quick. Clay. We love Clay's speechless. Shared ethics.
I have nothing new, but I would like to ask Jeremy to give you a update on the training that they So basically, we did one training in June where we trained seven rate staff members. There's another one coming up in July, trying to get through it slowly. We can't do fifty people at a time, and we can't get everybody available all at once regardless. It was basically the training that was outlined to us by the shared ethics advisory commission. We did all that training, everything went well. Last quicker than what I thought it was, it was about a two-hour training, and that's what we got. We got another one, like I said, I think it's next Tuesday, and it'll probably be another seven to ten, but we'll slowly get through it.
Michelle, that's what you were talking about? Thank you. Thank you. All right. They're not here, but I have something. He, well, they emailed us the Lakeland Park Drive flat for us to be able to accept it. So he said it's all good, I don't know, did you have any, okay. So he told me what we need to do. Okay, 'cause I emailed him and asked him if I don't think I've So I would make a motion to accept Lakeland Park Drive as presented in the flat to be considered a town street available for funds. A session? When Nick is ready. Roll call.
All in favor?
I
No, it's not financially All in favor? Any opposed, abstentions?
Okay, then we also need a motion for that same item. A motion, I'll make a motion to authorize the president to sign any associated documents to file with the state to officially add the vote to our listed streets. Roseanne, you can take it.
Thanks.
You're so welcome. Roll call.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, abstentions?
And then I will pass that on to him and he will finish that. So you may get some documents that you'll need to sign.
Thank you.
Any else? All right, Joe?
We've gotten some more noise complaints, the large PBS chemicals, I went out there and talked to management, and they told me that they had passed all their EPA noise testing except one particular area, and they opted to install noise dampeners throughout the entire plant. They said that they were gonna send me some more documentation on that, they have not yet. But it creates a problem because to enforce the current ordinance that we have noise wise, the equipment that the town would have to purchase is around eight thousand dollars, and we'd probably get three to five of those maybe a year, complaints, but it's difficult for me to try and respond to that because I don't have a way to enforce that. So I would like to ask if I could get permission to reach out to some sound engineers and some companies and at least get bids on pricing for what it would cost the town in those events to get noise testing done.
Sort of just like a company that comes out, if we had a complaint, they would come out and they would
And they would be, they would have the equipment to be able to test that in accordance with our
And you just wanna be able to weigh out what the cost of that would be versus buying the equipment to be able to do that ourselves.
Right.
But it's just a, just an estimated cost.
And would this motion
They are
I'm sorry. Would this motion also allow them to answer the complaint and state that we are looking further into this? You know, so we can
Claire, they currently, currently they have to do once a year? PBS. PBS, the company that we get noise complaints about, if they're saying, if they're telling him they're up to all of their EPA everything, they have to do that once a year, they have to do that.
I don't know, but I don't know what they're up to, what specifications of what agency is it?
I feel like if the EPA or whoever did something and checked it out, it's gotta be a public record, right? So we could request the public record to find out if they passed it or what their report was. Joe said they put damp
Noise dampeners.
Noise dampeners in, I don't know if that's true. We had discussed this, and you know, we've had residents come start with crack sale over the years, and crack sales come in and talk to us, it might be worth inviting PBS to come in. I don't know, because I don't feel like they're responding to him, and if we do a public records request for this report or something, I mean
So you suggest that we do the public record request and invite them to the next meeting?
I would, okay.
And you might ask them to provide the documentation, et cetera?
Like bring it
Because we have a direct contact with them, presumably, they're here in town, ask them to put the documents, and see if they'll give it to us, if not, then we can make that public record request, but just trying to get that from a federal agency and cut to that federal tape might be a lot harder to get it.
Yeah, definitely ask them first, but if it is a public records request, it's something we could request, while it could take some time. Yeah. So then, Joe, could you invite them to the next meeting and ask them to bring those documents?
Provide the documents ahead of
Yeah, that would be great. And then I think, I mean, yeah, you're talking about responding to the complaint, I mean, we're doing some further investigation, so that's
Trying to give them some direction, we had
Do we not wanna pursue getting finding out how much it would be to do the tests on our own layer? Versus the cost, if there's no cost associated with reaching out and finding out what the cost would be, just so that way next month, okay, we can say now, if they're saying, you know, maybe they don't wanna provide the report, and now we're ready for whatever it is our next step is gonna be to try to get it as little as possible.
That's fine, can you propose or propose for what it would cost for a company to come out?
Then was there any updates on the Anaya contractors?
Did we find out anything about unsafe building other than what Clay had sent? Do we have one of those? An unsafe building fund? We do not. But the way I understand it is if we create this fund by the money that's coming in from penalties and fees, fees into this fund, the way I understood the code?
Yeah, from the most part, yes.
So like all the penalties that you, that you collected?
Local state federal grants, any source of that to the unsafe building.
And then Should've been filled with into that fund. Right, and if we did any demolition, then it would come out of that
Like the civil penalty that was imposed at the hearing, that would go into the unsafe building. And from what I read, I would suggest obviously that's a net of play, it looks like the hearing authority can also impose one additional civil penalty besides the original one. And those two stipulations were that nothing has been done to rectify the problem, which is still the case, and that he hasn't made any, he hasn't made any attempts to bring anything in, to do anything to change that at all, then the town can impose another penalty. That's, I can send that up PDF of documents, just to
I feel like we, I feel like we need to have that fund though To create a fund first. To then transfer money into it, to then be able to But then also start feeding that fund. Correct. So can we make a motion to, or can somebody entertain a motion to have Nick create that fund? I'll make a motion to create the unsafe building fund.
Oh, second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, abstentions?
Thank you. And then what about another, you mentioned another penalty, who does that? Like are we, we the board that does that?
Yes.
We're the hearing board. So like right now, he's already being charged five thousand for us having his unsafe building hearing. And And now we, I think it says we can charge one more. Because he hasn't done anything since? Because he hasn't paid anything. Oh, because he hasn't paid?
He hasn't done anything to rectify the situation, it's still unsafe, it's still dangerous. And the other stipulation is, does it affect the surrounding property values or endanger anybody living in that area? Yes, it does.
So is that, do we just make a motion to do that? How did we do the first one? Did we do it at the hearing?
He did it at the hearing.
Hearing.
He was at the hearing, yeah.
Let's see, back to me.
So I sent him a letter, I sent him a letter so he had until June 25th, and Indiana Code calls for 15 days after that, that if it's not, if he hasn't paid that, the town can proceed with collections on that.
And that's just part of the statute that I sent you the other day.
Right. And now the second penalty though, would we need to put it on the agenda as like another hearing for him? To then impose another penalty? And does he have to be present?
That's a good question.
I mean, we have to do the unsafe fund, so if those are both ready for August, we could, we can figure out between now and then.
We're gonna have to dig into that, see if that's
Right, or in present, or if it needs to be like Okay. Did you send him a certified notice of the first fee and he received it?
Yes.
We're for sure?
Yes.
I mean, I feel like we could send him notice that it's gonna be on the agenda in August or Just another Another Like hey, listen Right, another penalty. Anything else? He, Joe, you had a couple liens, right, that we were looking at?
Yeah, I just wanted to get a status update on liens for 280 Mountain Road and 301 Mountain Road. Both of those properties, for different reasons, had a lien on them, and I never, I don't think it did ever actually happen.
They need to be filed. Can you, like recall, like, can you remind us what the liens were for?
Yes. 280 Mountain Road was the violation for having the boats and vehicles stored on the property. For, the property owner was Gabriel Omea, and it wasn't until I assessed the fine that he moved the stuff. He was delusional, he was on the phone, told me I wasn't ever gonna miss my property, I didn't know that.
So we're leaning it because he hasn't paid the fine?
Because he was in violation of chapter fifteen. I can send all of the corresponding information again to whoever needs it, but, so, yeah, and then he never, he never, he never paid, came in and paid the fine that I assessed originally, so then
He moved his stuff, he didn't pay the fine?
Well, he moved his, he moved his stuff after I sent him
Right, and I just wanna make sure But he moved his stuff, he just didn't pay the fine?
Yes.
Okay.
How much was that fine for?
Uh, I believe that was a seven hundred and fifty dollar fine.
And the other property was?
301 Mountain Road was because the street department had to go out there and cut the grass over there.
And I can share some of these emails with you, I think I'm looking at them, they were sent around all the time, that Nick was appointed as court treasurer. But in my experience, liens have always been handled by the court treasurer's office. I've never prepared a report or lien for the town with these types of matters. So I'm just looking at, I suggested that, you know, Maddie look into this to see if there's a template that's in the court treasurer's computer system or something to prepare or screen these types of liens and get those recorded and filed with the county.
Do you know how much 301 Mountain Road was?
The liens for that, no, I don't
It's probably minimal, but chapter nine, the basis ordinance does say if we cut your lawn, we're gonna, we're gonna lien it, we're gonna lien your property, so I mean, that's very straightforward, yeah, you'll get a violation, and then we're gonna lien you for the cost of our
The guy's cutting the grass, yes, okay.
Apologies, I didn't know that that was on me, so I'll look into that tomorrow.
Surprise.
Surprise, I'll take care of it.
Thank you. Anything else? So last month, I think Jack and I took on looking at the pay for our building commissioner who was moved full-time earlier this year, and we had talked about in the meeting raising his salary. He had provided different positions in the area, the one that seemed more similar to what he was doing is the building commissioner code enforcer in portage, and that current salary for that position is sixty-seven thousand and some dollars. In looking at what possible ways we could fund this, also last December in the salary ordinance, the council changed the street budget so that it was fifty-fifty with sanitation and street. But unless I'm looking at it incorrectly, it doesn't look like the street's budget was ever reduced. So there's half of everyone's salaries and perf and health insurance that's sitting in that fund. I think that if we reduced it and re-appropriated it, not only could the building department benefit from it, but potentially the other departments as well. So I would like to put together a plan for August, have it ready to go, I'll provide it to you all in advance, and if everyone, you know, is in agreement, we can make the motions to do that at the meeting, if you guys are good with that. Yeah, 'cause I wanted to look at that a little bit more, like I know that there is enough to cover that, but then there's gonna be some more, so as we're going into budgets, it makes sense, let's take a look at that, and what does that look like, you know, for anyone else?
Thanks for diving in there.
Yeah, and aside from that, like there are a few other shortfalls in the building department that will need to be considered, and I'll put this on what I'll give to you guys, but because the full-time was enacted after budget, there's not enough perf for retirement, the fifth vacation that was added, Lori will get that fifth vacation, so there's not enough pay to cover someone to cover her when she's gone. So there's a few things that they've given me those numbers, so I'll report that all back to you. But in the bigger picture, reducing that budget, and I talked to Brandon about this, reducing that to leave him with what he needs for salaries, and then as a council figuring out what, you know, where are we gonna put all that? But I think that it's a good place to To start. To start there for building. Okay. Anything else? Brandon's not here. Oh, he's not, and I totally printed what he asked me to report, but let me just pull it up, he had an emergency, so he couldn't be here. He says, "Street department, the street sweeping program has been a success, so it'll come back again in the fall. The brush program is still ongoing every Monday, weather permitting. He also wanted to thank Jeremy and Michelle for the ethics training. He gave me his list of equipment that's later on the agenda," and I just lost what else was in my head. I did talk with him though, and I would like to make a motion that as the superintendent of street and interim sanitation, that he be allowed to take a vehicle home. He responds to emergencies and having a vehicle that's stocked with what he needs, he can go straight to the location. Tell me that motion. Oh, second. Roll call.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Abstentions?
Thank you. Thank you. All right, any others? Police chief, Jeremy.
Similar to what we talked about in the police commission, basically two of our six officers are still in field trainings. They're both moving well, moving through fairly well. Officer Bennett obviously still has a long way to go, he's only been with us a couple months, but Officer Vodder should be in what should be his last month of field training, and hopefully he'll be released at the beginning of next month. Other than that, you have my report, I don't know if you had a chance to look over it as it just got to you today, but it's all we got.
Thank you. Brian's not here?
Neither is Brent, they're both on vacation. He wanted me to come to everyone to see, Tony and him had talked about how the ambulance is always before he did a stow it, and then something falls through and all that jazz. So on his wish list for things to come, they wanted a dive vehicle. Would any of you be opposed if he brought a proposition to us if they could fabricate that into a dive vehicle?
Do they have
They have all the current dive gear.
Do they have people that dive?
Yes, we're
Yeah.
Yes, and he said their current problem is they have nowhere to change. They need to change into their dive suit, they have to do it outside behind the sheets.
Don't you just pop up all those things?
I mean, we were just, we were just chatting and I followed I mean, we were just, we were just chatting and I, I followed what's happening with the ambulance, and I understand there's a part that it needs, and I think that part's about two hundred dollars and it's on back order, but, I, you know, I just said, you know, what, what else?
He said most things that they could fabricate to get all of their equipment in there and make it stay where it would need to be. If it is all within his budget, to do that, would anybody be opposed if he brought a proposition to us?
I'm always willing to look at things.
Yeah.
About making that into their dive vehicle, bring us.
No, if you want, yeah. As long as he comes with a plan and.
Has some money.
And then he also had a claim that was over by eighty-five dollars and seventy-three cents that he would, uh, like us to approve.
A claim for?
The AC cooling system repaired on the truck.
How did he pay for that, like, or wouldn't it just?
What does he mean it was eighty-five dollars over?
What he could sign for.
So is it not in the claim book?
It should be, this is from, he said it was in a, like, an emergency fix from Fire Service Inc., he sent me the.
I feel like I saw it in the claims.
The air conditioning was not working, and it says they fixed a couple things on this.
What's, what's the value?
Fifteen eighty-five seventy-three.
I mean, if it's in the claim book, when we approve claims, I'm sending it to him. I mean, he should, I mean, eighty-five dollars.
That's what he was just worried, Christine wasn't allowed.
He should be worried.
He should be worried, was everything else he's brought to us in the last few months?
Right, right, he better have eighty-five dollars.
I'm assuming he does, he just brought it to my attention that it was over.
Woo, what the heck!
Give me my chance.
You've got big nails over there!
I, let's order some pecan, we just like.
He probably didn't see that.
Do I need, do I need one of those pens to make sure they're not counted?
I'm gonna switch seats with Tony, I'm gonna run the meeting.
Please hand out fifties, we're all going over there.
You just spent fifty bucks talking about it.
No, we did, we did.
It's our money anyway, get it back.
You're making your money back tenfold, so it's fine.
We'll just move on, sanitation and storm, did he send you any sanitation?
So, no, but I have something as well, so, um, I will say that they are working on upgrades to all the lift stations.
Correct.
And they're gonna be very expensive, um, but Shem's working on that. Um, I've been talking with Brandon, and I think I might have run it past a few of you, he is the street superintendent interim sanitation right now. And again, in December of last year, when you, the council split the pay, you know, financially, in my opinion, we've created a public works department. Porter has a public works department, it is half street, half sanitation, the person's responsible for both. Um, so like, I feel like already, like financially, we have that department, we just need to create it on paper, merge job descriptions. So again, I would like if you all are willing to create a proposal for you all that we could look at in August and, um, see what we can do with that.
And that would involve changes to town code as well?
Yes.
I'm just putting that up.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right. Perk?
If we could, can I go back?
Oh, I'm sorry.
The, the, the fifteen eighty-five seventy-three for Ryan is not in that, so can we approve that one separately, please? If you wanna pay it.
I make a motion to approve claim invoice ST two zero six five two in the amount of one thousand five hundred and eighty-five seventy-three for the repair of the air conditioning on the fire truck.
Second. Where are we paying this out?
It is in his budget.
In his budget, oh, okay, sorry, no point.
Please, if that's in an email, why don't you forward that to Nick?
Okay.
Oh, do you have a second?
Yeah.
I do.
Oh, okay. Roll call, whenever you're ready.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, thank you.
All right. Perk?
Hello, everybody, I just got a couple of things, the Burns Harbor Park Department will be hosting a free youth archery event on July sixth, nineteenth, excuse me, from nine to twelve, this event is for ages seven and up, uh, please register, um, pre-registration is required for this event. So, um, I would go for more information to the Burns Harbor Facebook page, um, and, or, and, or contact camp at the park. Um, they need to be there by eight-thirty to sign the waiver. Also, um, our next day camp week will be August fourth through the eighth, from nine to twelve.
All right, thank you.
RDC?
It's a long one today.
I mean, I lost everybody in the audience, so, thank you too for.
So, the RDC we approved today, um, we're going to be fixing the sidewalk that's here that was cracked, um, and the ADA pads, got some quotes on that, so we're gonna be working on doing that. Um, we made, uh, did an update to the design plan for, I don't have my agenda in front of me now, I just forgot the phase one A, I believe it's B.
Phase one B.
One B, that's, uh, going back there, so we have updated the plan, a hard copy, Jill's gonna upload a new copy to the website, so we can see where we're at there, we're still waiting on NS, um, to be able to finish that, and that's about that for RDC.
Thank you. Where's Sinez?
We had a notice of public comment, Indiana Flame Service Contractor of Cleveland Cliffs, Burns Harbor LLC, and Chrome Deposit Corporation, and Fabrezzo University. All the correspondence is here in the folder, you guys can review it if you really need.
Any future? Um. Resolutions and ordinance.
First one is resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero three, resolution adopt the safety action plan funded about safe streets and roads for all businesses for a grant.
Motion to adopt.
Roll call, please?
I'm sorry, that was Tony, and then Lisa, me.
I was just gonna steal.
From my, from my, I'm, it was me.
Forgot about me.
It was me. This is twenty twenty-five dash zero three, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, thank you.
Uh, next one is resolution twenty twenty-five dash four, town of Burns Harbor appropriations transfer, be hereby resolved by the town council of the town of Burns Harbor, Porter County, Indiana, that the following transfers of funds be made into twenty twenty-five budget, General Marshall. Five thousand thirty-three dollars and twenty-seven cents from Deputy Marshall two dash one one two into Part-Time Deputy two dash one one four. Six hundred and eight dollars from Deputy Marshall two dash one one two into Social Security Tax two dash one two one. Four thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents from Deputy Marshall two dash one one two into Health Insurance two dash one two three. Four thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-six cents from Sergeant two dash one two zero into Corporal two dash one one nine. Six thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents from Sergeant two dash one two zero into Health Insurance two dash one two three. And two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars from Uniform Allowance two dash one two nine into Uniforms two dash two four four, pass and adopt at this ninth day of July twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call, please?
Orders? Councilwoman Bozek?
Yes.
Councilwoman Drakes?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeCarty?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Yes.
And Councilwoman McCork?
Same.
Thank you. Finally, you have ordinance three two five dash twenty twenty-five, an ordinance of the Burns Harbor Town Council amending the tax of the fee table concerning various building department fees within the town of Burns Harbor, Indiana. So.
Second. Roll call?
Councilwoman Bozek?
Yes.
Councilwoman Drakes?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeCarty?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCork?
Yes. And then Clay, I don't, I don't know how recently we've done the ordinance, it has two readings, correct? First reading's tonight, we do the second reading.
Unless you, unless you have the answer, so it's just kind of a rule.
Yeah, so I make a motion to suspend the rules so we can have the second reading tonight. This particular ordinance would not take effect for ninety days, because it's a fee base, so if we approve it tonight, I'm not even interested.
Second, Joe?
I'm sorry, which one, who was it, Tony made motion, I seconded.
To suspend the rules.
Yep.
Roll call?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance on second reading.
Second?
Okay, can we do it again?
Oh.
Whenever you're ready, Nick.
Yep. Apologies, are all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions?
So then Nick, that would need to be, it needs to be published, because it's a fee.
But they don't go to it back for ninety days.
Correct, correct.
Not till it's been published.
Right, yeah, so that'll need to be published, we, I, it hasn't been done in a while, so I'm sure there's something, but, um, Jeremy, I'm gonna end up.
I just had a question, I, because I thought when we talked about a plan commission, maybe things have changed, but it was something that was gonna be implemented at the beginning of twenty twenty-six, but just for my clarification, is it ninety days now, or is this twenty twenty-six?
Well, it can't be for ninety days, but is that what the?
So I would, so I thank you for reminding me that, 'cause Joe, we did talk about that, but specifically, you didn't want to deal with the licensing fees, correct? Well, the first of the year or all of it?
I think because it's one ordinance and it involves multiple things, I think that's why we talked about it, but, I mean, if you guys wanna do it in ninety days, that's, I, I just wanted clarification.
Because this, the differences made October to end of December, we've been talking about two and a half months.
And I, and my opinion is if the purpose is to raise the fees to bring in more money, then I would want to do it sooner than later. If there's a, if there's something administratively that makes sense to not charge those new licensing fees or something till the first of the year, then I think maybe by motion we could do that, but, yeah.
I think by this late, when they hear most of the people that are gonna be listening to the lessons, I mean, that would be minimal, I would think that they are.
Yeah. So maybe it's inevitable.
Yeah.
Step anniversaries, uh, and I apologize if I missed anybody, so let me know. I look at Vernon, Joe, and Madeline, who all have their one-year anniversary coming up. Maddie's supposed to. Yes. All right. Porter, Porter County Assessor MOU approval, we, anybody wanna speak on this, anybody on the table list? Well, so here, here's the current situation, is that Cleveland Cliffs is in discussion with the DLGF. And the DLGF did, um, assess the property, there's some caveats, so that I think, I won't say it right, but, um, they're in discussion with, I believe, the intention to settle. So then what does that mean for the county, and I think that Clay reached out, but may not have gotten the answer, like, not because of that process, are we on hold waiting to see, right, or is the county still, like, what's their plan, what is their timeline, that was also my question, are they gonna wait, and then are they gonna see what happens, and then maybe do the appraisal? Because I don't know that, um, I, I think, I guess I wanna know that, I also feel like if, I don't think they're doing something this month, so if we, if this came back next month, and something didn't go how we anticipated, we can still join, I think, do you have any more information, Nick? Okay.
Clay sent us.
Yeah, I mean, I was hoping to know, like, their timeline, because I do know that, you know, you have thirty days to appeal. So that's what's happened, and then there, that discussion is happening, is our understanding, and, um, so waiting to see, I don't know if the DLGF has, like, uh, okay, we're gonna decide by this date, so those are kind of the questions, I, I don't feel comfortable jumping into an MOU right now.
Right.
I think that if we, next month, we're like, yes, we wanna join, I think the.
Well, I think there's still too much up in the air.
Yeah.
Gonna commit that much money to something where we don't know what could possibly happen.
The last time Sue was here, I asked her when did they need the money, and she said within three months.
Okay, so we have time.
That's kind of a timing.
But the, but at the time, though, when she was here as well, we did not know that there was a conversation with Cliffs and DLGF, and I don't know if they did, so I understand that, but with that now, I think it kind of changes.
Well, and I feel like she wanted to also come to a consensus with them versus the other route, so if there is a conversation over the wife, we should to see what they could possibly come to a consensus on.
And I, I've been in touch with the county attorney, I mean, even tried to call him, and he texted me back at three fifty-five, said, "I'll call you after this meeting," and I said, "Okay," and I never heard a problem, um, so we must've gotten more tied up with something else, but, you know, we, I informed him that we know that there's been some discussions, and that we will be discussing this tonight, um, so I haven't heard anything, but I think based on what we don't have paper on it.
For August. Sure, I think, I think we should keep it on the agenda, because that helps us touch base with Cliff, Cliffs regularly, and to keep, keep a pulse on it, for sure, yeah.
And, and the county assessor did email Nick and me on Monday, and I'm not sure why she's contacting me, and she should be contacting the county attorney. So I just forwarded that email to the county attorney to say, "Please let her know the town council will discuss them on Wednesday night from my email to you from last week." And then I emailed from the prior week, was essentially saying, you know, there's discussions, um, you know, with DLGF, a very costly settlement, and how is that? You know, what's going on, what do you know, et cetera.
I'm surprised she's, she left down here, but, yeah. All right. Fifth capture determination. Who do you wanna talk? Is it in that folder? Okay, well, I don't know why it's in the agenda, so I thought maybe somebody had something to say. All right. Recommended, recommendation letter and invoice for Milestone Contractors, twenty twenty-four dash two, the CCMG Road Paving Project.
So this is invoice, sorry, this, this is invoice two five eight three two nine F zero one from Milestone for the twenty twenty-four dash two CCMG Road Paving Project. Uh, this project is a seventy-five twenty-five match, so the bid price is six hundred and forty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifteen cents. Indot has given us the forty-two, one sixty-five, and thirty-six cents, and the town committed to paying the remainder of the bid, one hundred and sixty thousand seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and seventy-nine cents, uh, in the PO as a financial.
And that is, um, there's a retainer on it, right, a ten percent?
Yes.
Okay, and so what did you say the total is for tonight?
The total for us is.
Five, oh, sorry.
Okay, so the, the total bid price is six hundred and forty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifteen cents, our portion is a hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one, and seventy-nine cents.
I would make a motion to pay that.
Out of where?
Um, it should, you, you already should have appropriated it.
Yeah, sorry.
From MVH, probably.
It's, I think that's where it came from.
Yeah, MVH, yeah. From what, like, like last year, actually.
Whenever you're caught up, Nick, we can do roll call.
Who made the second?
Me.
You're sure no name, Nick.
There we go, our fan again.
I made your new name, please.
Look, I'm gonna slip in the new names.
Let me get it off my, forget it, I.
It's fine.
Slip it out.
It's fine.
All in favor?
I make a.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions, thank you.
And then just FYI, weather permitting, they should be coming out to fix this upfront upfront at the town hall tomorrow.
Okay. Um I was ordered to email about the Tiff capture.
Having, I'm sorry, things were out of order.
Okay.
So if we can if we can go back to number three, they could, uh the Tiff.
We had a reminder of what it was.
The Tiff capture determination, yeah, this was from like four weeks, it was right after the last meeting that this came in, so it's
Yes.
a lifetime ago, so this is uh, you know, we need to accept the letters uh from me and from the RDC, so.
What does accept mean do?
So it it just it's a requirement of statute that
those letters be essentially sent and received.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept those letters.
I'll second. Roll call, when you have a second. When your pen's done scribbling.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? So just to clarify, this is a letter that I had to send um to the to Porter County, to Dave Wyszlinski and Ryan Kubel at Porter County, um just informing them that we had no uh no excess allocations, we had no funds to give back to anybody, we were gonna utilize all of our Tiff capture funds this year.
Alright, cell tower lease agreement. So I sent you um the history of the cell tower from the time it came about to now. And if you notice, it's, I forget, the lease expires not until like thirty something, right, twenty thirty something. And um every five years, they have, we have the ability to come and ask for a change to the lease and they have a opportunity and we can cancel it, all that good stuff is part of the lease itself. Um this time, this year, not in that timeframe, but they requested um a change to the lease and it's in there that you saw. They gave us two options, they wanted to change the rent escalation, so it goes up three percent every year. So um if you saw, we started out like at seven thousand dollars and we're at eighteen something now a year. They're asking to reduce the escalation to two percent and their um reasoning is that uh the the businesses that are on the tower will negotiate like with them and they're really, they're at like the two percent. So what's happening is that they're they're paying the one percent. Which if you look at the numbers, though, it's like a couple hundred dollars a year difference. Um but in addition to asking for a reduction in the escalation, they're also wanting the option to add more space to the pad out there. They want another six hundred and twenty five square feet, um they anticipate having three additional tenants. The difference with those tenants would be that instead of, that we would still get the annual payment from them. But when there's tenants, we would get an additional one hundred fifty per month per tenant. Now that can fluctuate, like they could have, let's say they have a tenant for six months and then they they're gone, which is unlikely because if you've looked at the pad, like you're installing all of this stuff, you're not just gonna pick up and go. Um one of the things that I talked with their representative about, though, is that you can only extend to the west and the north. Right? The west and the north, because otherwise you're in the police garage or practicing, right, I got that right.
I had to go see my.
I know, in the lake, in the lake. So um I was asking, I kept trying to ask her for a plat because they provided that before, like what like what are the dimensions you need, what's your preference? Because in the conversation, the green space between the building department and that pad, I haven't done any research on it, but potentially was a septic field previously. And if that's the case, they can't put the pad there.
No.
So which would then mean they want, potentially want six twenty five that would stick out, you know, some behind the garage and the generator. But they, she's like, well, they're not gonna give you a plat and all of that unless you approve it with, you know, contingent upon that or something. Um the other option they wanted was to convert it to a perpetual easement and they would give us a one-time payout. I think there could be some issues as a government agency with a perpetual easement, I think Nick said probably wouldn't want to do that.
Probably not.
Um and then option three, which is always an option, is we just leave it the way it is. Now here's the, we have some time to think about this and I can push them more on the space if we want, or I can do some more research. Um they asked for this back in January because the payment is due to us in August. At the time that I finally got to her, it was already like mid to late July and it, they just didn't have time organizationally to rewrite the contracts and then make the payment, so they are making their payment this August of eighteen, I don't know what it is right now. Um eighteen three ninety five forty and but we would want to look at this and make a decision for next year so they would have time to do that.
So they pay once a year now, but if we were to say yes to adding the additional, we would get a monthly payment.
And a once a year.
And a once a year.
Right, so we get the once a year for them for leasing. And then the tenants that are there, we would get one fifty for them. Now that's, could have a tenant, we might have one, there might be two, they could come and go. Um one of the things, if you read the history, is that, you know, our police is on the tower for free. Um there's a few stipulations about how high it can go and that, but but our police equipment is on the tower at no charge. Um the the money right now funds the scholarship that we give out. Um so.
So is there enough room back there without affecting our buildings?
So I think that they wouldn't affect our buildings.
Or the operation of our.
Yeah, I don't I don't think so, but like I said, going west might not be something we can do because of the prior use of the land. Um if they went to the north, I mean, I'd have to know the dimensions they want to go out there and be like, okay, it's gonna look funky or you know what I mean?
I need to like spray paint enough.
Yeah, no, right, and that's what I want to do, so.
Oh, and I would really, you know, if there's a septic field.
Right, so I could look into that and I can ask her some more, I'll tell her that, you know.
Eight one one dig and they can literally show us.
There's probably plans somewhere, but um I can I can ask her more and tell her that obviously we're we are wanting to make a decision, but and we're interested in the additional square footage, but we really need to know.
Absolutely, yeah.
Right?
Which way it's gonna face, how close it's gonna be.
Yeah. In the process, the lady was great, I have a a direct number to um like the people that we need to talk to if there's ever an issue there, I didn't realize they were doing construction recently and it was a disaster when Brandon and I went over there, but since then it's been cleaned up, so I think they might be done with what they're working on, but. So I'll I'll get some more information and I'll let her know that, you know, we talked about it, that because we've got time, we have time.
Okay. Alright, Lakeside Home Inspection Proposal.
Um this was something that uh Shen worked with us, uh this is someone that he knows. Um and this would be a backup for if and when Joe may need assistance, uh maybe he's on vacation or we get lots of uh billing, you know, inspections that are due. Um if you notice, it is a two hundred per hour with a minimum hour. Um we bill, well, we will be billing forty five in inspection, so ideally we would try to get, you know, staff three or four or more in that hour in the area. Again, it's just to have people on hand and uh Joe and Jack and I talked and Joe has another connection. Um I just think it's good to have some support. So I would make a motion that we accept um the Lakeside Home Inspection Proposal. And then I would communicate that with, I believe his name is Joe, too.
Yeah.
Um let him know that so that, you know, he'll, we'll establish some communication and if there was a need, we would be able to reach out to him.
Can you send that proposal?
Yes.
Second.
You caught it?
Ready.
Discussion.
Roll call, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you.
Alright, um done with the bids, or do we want to come back to that? Until we find where we're gonna have the funds?
I, are you, do you have someone you prefer? I mean, obviously there was a low bidder.
I went ahead and printed them out again.
Yeah, I feel like it's a.
You had bids.
Yeah, no, you know that, I, there's a low bidder.
Yeah, if I, if I was to recommend somebody, I would recommend David's lawn care.
You know if they're still accurate.
I would have to check to make sure because it's been over ninety days. Make sure those bids are still valid, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I do think what we were just saying, though, in terms of making sure.
Send anyone? Do it.
Um having a safe, unsafe fund set up and money in it.
Before we move.
Yeah.
We don't know where to pull it from right now.
And if we're gonna invite Anaya back.
Mm-hmm.
Or let him know that.
Process is moving forward.
That will, that there'll be a second penalty and then I think we might be in the place to.
I haven't been with email.
Okay.
I would say give Clay a little bit of time to research that as well with the opposing of the second penalty.
Just to make sure.
Because there's a lot of stuff in there, and it has to be followed through the letter.
Alright, um pay salt dome application one and two.
Um these are ready and they're.
Do you have a?
Um yes.
I got it.
Okay.
Okay.
Pay application number one is a hundred and eighty thousand nine hundred and seventy two dollars and no cents.
Okay.
On the second. Apologies, okay, in a second.
This is for what we're speaking on?
Salt dome.
Thank you. Bless you.
Bless you.
Thank you. Need the cell tower to work better so we have good internet. Uh pay application number two is ninety thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars and no cents.
And then there's a um there is thirty thousand that would be remaining to be paid after their punch list is completed, which I believe is six months from installation, so Septemberish, we would pay the final payment once that's done. I'd make a motion to pay pay application one and two for the salt dome, um noting that it's from the ARC miscellaneous fund.
Oh, okay.
That's what you all said, right? It's shit coming out of ARC.
Mm-hmm. Of the ARC fund.
Alright, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Second, did we second? Did I second?
You just.
Now?
You just did.
Alright. Discussion? Roll call, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Alright, items of closed bids.
What, what do we have?
I know that Street said um we have two items that we would like to do that for the two thousand nine F two fifty crew cab with the plow and the patent generator. I know that there's a process for that, Nick, that we've always gone through, advertising and all of that.
Yep.
But we're always supposed to, sorry to interrupt you, every, all department heads were supposed to.
Yeah.
If they had something, they were supposed to bring it tonight.
Yeah. Okay.
I haven't heard from anyone else in terms of that.
Do you want to confirm?
Can we send out an email just confirming that nobody else has anything?
Maybe, maybe else has anything. Yeah. Maybe you should have, I don't know.
So August, yeah?
Maybe just shut them more clear, tell us if you have anything or if you have nothing, please tell us.
Right.
Respond, yeah.
I know Ryan had stuff to decommission, but I don't think he had anything to.
Alright.
So we'll just move it to others. And it's the larger pieces, Nick, do you know, like, we've got two, no, we have three printers, we've got the old sound system from this room, how do we get rid of stuff like that? Can we sell it? Can we?
What about what we did with the phone, like, well, is it still working, though?
The phones, we dispose to the phones.
Right.
Jeremy moved two printers that I'm sure somebody would. For an off, yeah, they're commercial printers, so could those be put into an auction?
Yeah, I mean, if if they still have value, you don't want to just throw them away or get moved.
No, I don't, yeah, I I I'm not sure, but I do want to also, I in that we have, you know, an empty office slash closet where I've kind of been stuffing things. But I'd like to go through everyone else, too, you have an old computer that's not being used, like, let's get it all and go through it and figure out what do we need to keep and what do we need to get rid of.
I would talk to brainstorm, too, because if it's a computer, if there's any.
Hard drive needs to be, you know.
Information on it to.
Yeah, I'm meeting with him tomorrow.
Even though it may be public record, there might be, if you have personnel, you know, employee social security numbers, you don't want that getting out there. That's not in public.
Well, and if we didn't, I'm assuming they would know where we could recycle them and or take them if they are really not worth anything to wipe them and then.
Right, yeah, I mean, I'm meeting with him tomorrow for like the whole shared drives and so I was gonna ask him as well because see what his suggestions are. So who's gonna, do you mean email everyone about auction items, no auction items? Okay, Nick.
Can you just ask yes or no, if you have nothing, say no.
Please respond.
Yeah, if you have nothing, cool, we're gonna move forward with everything else.
Yep.
Thank you.
Alright, twenty seventh payroll, have department heads address this.
Well, I saw that in January or February, the council did an additional appropriation from rainy day.
That was for Jeremy.
You, wasn't it?
Well, it's sixty seven thousand dollars.
That was way more than what mine was.
So.
And we do it for every?
Yeah, it looked like from the meeting, so I guess I just wanted to bring it up to make sure if there's anything, um I I read you can pay that pay like from the rainy day now that you've appropriated it, I don't know if Nick would want to put it in everyone's budget or just pay that last payroll like from rainy day. Um I don't know if we, is is sixty seven gonna be enough? I think that was the number that was appropriated because ten percent was the limit. I just wanted to put it on the radar to make sure we're ready.
Does it make sense for him to keep it in his budget or does it make sense?
I think it makes sense to keep it in rainy day because it's a, it's a anomaly.
Because you don't want to put it in somebody else's budget and then turn they try and spend it, use it and we have.
Or because then you have to take it right back out and it just.
Yeah, they're gonna take from it anyway.
Yeah.
It happens, whatever, six years.
Yeah, not often, so I was just concerned, I saw the sixty seven and I think our monthly payroll is like forty eight, but at twenty seventh, we might run into holiday and overtime, so is that a? We have two holidays.
Yeah, they're getting paid for.
I mean, I know, I know, our, my department, I mean, ours was about twenty seven thousand with the holidays figured out with everything.
Okay. I think you're the only one who's got that figured out right now. So I feel like just to, just to be ready. Just put it on the radar, alright? Zoom streaming. You don't have to do it anymore unless a board member can't come.
So here's the.
So how?
Not just a board member because sometimes your engineer or I and maybe, you know, I make every effort to be here personally for RDC and Town Council, but
Sure. Right, right.
If I know there's a ten minute plan commission meeting or a ten minute sanitation board meeting, you know, and I'm driving up here
You're nothing. Right.
four or five nights a month, then I don't have to, I think I'm gonna be here for four hours.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting we cancel Zoom, I'm just saying like tonight, no one's on. Uh how would we know those?
But it's entirely possible we wouldn't have known that until the until Jack turned on your head, so I'll call you out until Jack called at six fifty five and seven.
Well, someone should communicate that in advance.
I'm not gonna make it.
We can have this.
Okay, then you call and we literally click button and join Zoom.
I don't know what the harm is in having it on.
You have to have the number together.
Having it on?
Yeah, what's the harm in having it on?
Are you saying don't just create a Zoom code for every meeting or?
Or or just don't open it for every meeting, we're, I mean, we're live streaming on YouTube. So we can't, we have to continue to do that.
Quite sketchy, yes. Might schedule, yes.
So are you saying it's too much for us to then create also a Zoom? I was hoping you were coming back.
I was wondering whose it was, so I was like.
Always something.
I had it spotted.
I was scaring it this whole time too.
I had no idea till I started leaving.
Oh.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Is there a cost savings or is it just the the employee time savings to not have someone in the court charge office or secretary of the, to create this and link it back?
Um, I, no, I mean, it, I honestly, I don't care. What I care is that our police chief sits at that computer during the meeting and is not over here with everyone else. Which is why I have a mouse and a keyboard so that I can manage.
Oh.
If we wanna run Zoom, I don't care. We don't have to. Unless someone can't be here, and that's fine if we open it. It doesn't matter. Every other board has a secretary that sits over there.
And the reason you need to have Zoom for one of the five of you is per statute, you need to have a quorum physically present to have a meeting. The non-quorum, the non-physically present can participate via Zoom, but they have to be seen and heard.
We've done our FaceTime and we cannot get on Zoom.
And, and not just seen and heard by, you know, you, someone on FaceTime, the other person seen and heard.
And you have to be on that screen.
I plugged you around and when we could not connect to Zoom before.
But I, I don't need to be seen and seen.
Whoever it was, yeah, come around.
I don't need to be seen, I can, you know, call in on the phone, but the five of you or the, the, those of the five of you who aren't physically present or of the planning commission or VCA, whoever, need to be seen and heard when they're voting.
Okay.
'Cause I remember there was once when Nick on the council, he was sick from a dog, but he needed to be seen and heard, and I'm like, when you're voting, put your screen on so we can see you.
You might look like Jethro, you need to see you.
Even if it was the bathroom.
And she, and like we, I did not wanna turn the camera, I was embarrassed.
It doesn't matter, we still do, we still do both.
And only operate Zoom if we have to, but you can operate everything else from there. I mean, we can keep zooming if you want. Are our meetings still being recorded and saved?
Take care of your.
On YouTube, yeah, on YouTube.
'Cause that has to happen, correct? You don't have to have a Zoom code unless.
Yes.
Not just YouTube, are they being saved to the town website?
Uh, I don't know if they're being saved to the town website, they're like, okay, they are on, they're on, um.
Yeah, 'cause you can go back and find them, so.
Starting, starting this, I think we need to.
Have to.
Like download them and.
If you wanna look into that, Nick, I don't know if saving them to a third-party site to YouTube is enough, I think we might need to.
Like, do we need like a link on our town website that you can say, I want this meeting from?
And maybe it's a link to the, maybe it's a link to YouTube, but I think we need to have it on our website.
Like a direct link where they could click it and go find any of our meeting minutes from the past. Do we have to have so many? We have to have twelve months of, do we have to have two years?
It's just wanna affect the person a month, so.
For three months though, right, for videos? I'm sorry, I read that. I was on Valco's website though, 'cause I was looking for their format of agendas with terms and stuff, and they use Civic Plus and you know how you can click agenda minutes? There's also a place where there's a video and you can click it. I don't know how that works, but.
You have to like do this.
I am on our website.
Can you ask the brainstorm people tomorrow because they obviously will know what we would need to set up to be able to.
Yeah, so can you operate Zoom from there too now? With the wireless house? Um, it's on right now, yes, yeah. So we, from here on out, we've never operated it.
Like if someone, if someone plugged in, they're in right now, if I went to Zoom and tried to, would you see it?
I could. I, right now, nobody's on, so there, it's, so this, so this screen right here gives you the option where you can split the screen with, um.
Like someone who's zooming in?
Yes, and see the, 'cause the other thing that we could potentially do moving forward with the screen also is have your agenda up there.
I mean, that would be great, so. I mean, I think that's, I think that's what we talked about from the very beginning, if we wanted our agenda on a screen, even if it's behind us, like.
Something projected so people can see it versus.
As opposed to.
Well, I would love to.
I'll try. Anyway, so I mean, we can keep doing it, whatever, it doesn't matter.
Approve the financial report? And I wanna make a motion.
So, sorry. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Have sanctions? Thank you.
Great, approval to pay vouchers with three more signatures for April?
I think it's in there, everyone needs to add in there.
I think it's just June, right? It should just say June, so it's more correct.
I have one for May too on the other side. So we just need to say June.
For June?
Yeah, so June.
So.
Second.
I just have one, um, thing that was brought up from the building department, which is kinda odd and I'm not sure. The water bills have the billing address on it. They're being billed for their address, so building is being billed, fire is being billed. The town hall bill is then split between building, fire, and town.
Yes.
Why?
Instead of coming out of town.
I don't think we should be doing that.
Well, the town hall wants to split between two, right?
Police and.
Or just.
So sometimes, like down in the street and building department, they share the building. Street pays for sewer and water for both of them and building picks up the phone. That might be the same case here, I'm just saying, I don't understand why.
It's coming out of three different budgets.
Why the.
Well, they're getting charged, boys. They're getting charged for their own bill.
And they're paying for the town, which I don't, I just.
Jeremy, has it ever been within your budget that you pay for?
No, I've never paid for water, I've always paid two sevenths of the phone bill though, up until this prior move, so while everybody else paid like a hundred and sixty or a hundred and seventy, I paid three hundred plus for my phone. So, that's just how it was. I mean, I, I think, I think down below, it's a matter of, all the money comes from the general fund, an amount is appropriated to pay those bills. So then, if you reduce what a department's paying, in essence, wouldn't the town council then be reducing what they're funding them? Because you're, you're providing the funds to pay that bill. Unless a change was made that negatively affected it post-budgets. I mean, if I'm following that correctly, I think that's kinda how it is. I don't know, maybe I'm not.
Oh.
No, I just wanted to see what would happen. She didn't, I got on the Zoom.
Yeah, it's been open, yeah.
Sorry, I can have your, you up there every meeting?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave the meeting.
No, don't leave.
Just virtually, I'll still stay.
Oh, I need to see your face.
Right.
There you go.
Can you zoom in on him? And whoever's, well, no, 'cause I don't wanna, whoever's talking, 'cause I don't wanna be on there.
So basically, that's being paid out of.
So I'm just, we're just asking, bill the address. I don't understand the division. Why would the building be responsible for a portion of the water up here?
Yeah.
So can, can we just?
I hate saying that's how it's always been, but I.
I don't think that's how it's always been. I think that something, yes, something changed at some point, but I don't think that's how it's always been. I would just like, yeah, I would just like the direction that the billing address is the person who pays for the bill. Unless there's a good reason and it just wasn't communicated.
I will look into that.
Alright, do we have an approval to pay vouchers with three or more signatures for June?
Um, yeah.
Ms. Arbroaz and Lisa.
Oh, we're in discussion, okay, sorry. Roll, roll call?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Have sanctions.
I have seen. Do we have purchase orders this month? I did not see it on the table.
No, there was nothing on the table.
What is going on?
Better knock on this.
Ryan's not here, that's what's going on.
Ryan's in Alaska. And maybe they haven't crashed a fire truck lately.
Purchase order came.
Stop, stop.
Alright, appro, approval of purchase orders submitted with three or more signatures.
Uh, you missed May.
We did that.
I thought you said April.
I thought April and May will turn into June, do we know?
Yeah, I thought we.
Them from last week.
'Cause I have April and May on here.
We're current.
We should be current.
Yeah.
Someone's skipping fourteen, I should.
Well, I mean, we did that last month, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes. Sorry, fifteen.
Okay. Um, approval of purchase orders submitted with three more signatures.
We don't have any.
Nope. Do we need to approve anything?
Nope.
We approved the one I needed.
Alright, old business, fellow open positions. The only thing I have is, um, still a seat on the sanitation board for somebody. That's it. Alright, budget workshops, um, this is just a pre-workshop, we haven't done, since I've been on here, we haven't done a pre-budget workshop. Before we go into budget meetings with department heads, we have it scheduled for July seventeen. Um, I'd like to start around ten AM. So I guess department heads, when you wanna, um, do you wanna email me with the time?
Are you thinking like every half hour, like?
I'm, yeah, it shouldn't take very long.
Felt like that's how it was.
I think budget meetings themselves, I think we did every hour, did we?
Preliminary, we tried to every half hour.
But preliminary, you could just say a half hour increment.
Starting at ten AM.
Yeah.
And a seventeen.
You know, Kim wants to probably do the first one.
That's fine, um, but Jeremy's on midnight, so I'm sure he doesn't wanna do the first one at ten AM, so.
And we also have a six o'clock meeting that night, correct, for additional appropriations?
Sure, correct, okay. Alright, good in the order, does anybody have anything?
Just a, a question, I know we talked about when the fire chief and deputy chief are both on vacation, do we know who's in charge when they're not here? I mean, if there was an emergency in town.
It goes to whoever is in command if they're.
But, but I mean, it, I, I would think, isn't there some procedure that we would know?
It's a lieutenant of something, it just literally goes down the line and they.
I mean. But we would know who to call, I mean, if there was an emergency.
We would call nine one one.
There's an emergency. They know, all of their bells and whistles are off.
They're making, they're discussing.
I mean, I, just from my perspective, like, so when we have our incident here at town, eh, with our department heads, the fact that they called my cell phone while I'm off duty instead of calling our dispatcher who's trained to obtain all the proper information, like, when there's something actually going on, now, if you just need information from me, absolutely call me, no problem. But when there's an active incident, you should call the people that are paid to take that information, it's gonna get everything we need instead of, oh, I'm not sure what they said. Like, you never know what's going on, or what happens if it's an emergency, now you wasted a bunch of time trying to call somebody's cell phone instead of either the department or nine one one.
And when they call you, that call is not recorded.
No, no, I have no record of it. Yeah, my guy gets in a crash heading there, it's all subjective as far as what happens and whether this call ever existed. As opposed to having the appropriate people handling the calls.
Well, and Ryan told, Ryan told me he was gonna be on vacation and then he said Brett would be in charge, but then Brett also took a vacation, so then they go through their hierarchy. And whoever the person after Brett is then in charge.
It wasn't, again, not knowing that the books are up to date, but I don't think both department heads could, or that could happen, that the deputy and the fire chief could be on vacation at the same time. I'm not accusing or, I just wanted to know, going forward, if that's something that we should think about.
If they have the manpower to run their department, I mean, I don't know if we have anything in our book saying that they can't.
And obviously, if you have plane tickets and have made plans six, eight months, I mean, they're in Alaska, that's a, you plan for that.
Well, don't they have to, they don't have to have a, a, a full-time employee has to have approved vacation time before that's part of the process of this town, it's not.
But fires.
Neither of them are full-time.
Full-time, no.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
They're both.
But yes, the, the plane manual, yes, everyone should be turning in vacation by March or something.
But only full-time people are, thank you, okay.
So whenever they're gone, just the next person covers it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, and the other question I just had, the one thing I could bring up was rig doctors, is that gonna resolve?
Um, we're, we're looking into that, the legality of our treasurer's office accepting payments in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars a month. If there's actually statutory requirements from the state or not on that, or if it's, uh, contingent upon adopted by ordinance.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Can you just email about the pre?
You can email me.
Okay.
Okay. Alright.
My next motion to adjourn the meeting.
We don't have a second for discussion.
Oh, sorry. You want to discuss it? Roll call when you're ready.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Have sanctions? Thank you.
Kiabo, what's up? I know you did, we just, we just said the pledge.
I stood.
Okay.